I'd like to call this meeting to order of the Yankton Board of City Commissioners. Please join me in the pledge.
I pledge allegiance to the founding of Yankton as a state of America and to the republic of which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice
Roll call, please.
Sarda? Here. Ferdy? Here. Gross? Here. Knopf? Here. Mybaum? Here. Minor? Here. Mayor Hoffner? Here. City Manager Nelson? Here.
We establish the quorum, we'll continue, and thanks everyone for coming tonight. The first, um, second under routine business is the minutes before you from the special meeting of January 20th and the regular meeting of January 22nd. I move the minutes?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Anybody from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number three is to schedule bills before you. What's your pleasure?
Move we pay the bills?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to pay the bills, any discussion? Roll call, please.
Minor?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Ferdy?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Knopf?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner?
Aye, motion carried. Before we get started, we have a proclamation, but we also like to recognize the families of Charles Murphy and John Simple, past city commissioners, so keep them in your thoughts, please. And we have a proclamation, so we're going to officially, because the date on the proclamation is the 25th of February for Mike and Jerry Healy, but I'll read this tonight, and then we're going to officially, um, award it on the 25th, okay, at the ALX, so. I'll read it tonight to, um, whereas the 2017 Citizens of the Year are Mike and Jerry Healy. The Citizen of the Year Award was initiated in 1979 to recognize individuals in the community who have dedicated their lives to the betterment of Yankton and the people who comprise it. Mike and Jerry are the community's most deserving 48th annual honorees. And whereas these communities' servants work successfully in fulfilling their careers in our great state of South Dakota and the city of Yankton for 50 years, and all along the way, they have shared their many talents through the community, volunteerism with a multitude of Yankton organizations. And whereas they are recognized for exemplary service to their community of Yankton, Mike and Jerry together served Majestic Bluffs, Sister James Nursing Home, United Way, Retired Senior Volunteer Program, the Center, Meals on Wheels, Sack Pack, Sacred Heart Parish, and their Catholic faith in many capacities. Mike has also served Yankton City's Planning Commission, Yankton Area Chamber of Commerce, Transportation Committee, Mount Marty College, Rotary International, Boy Scouts, Habitat for Humanity, Marty Council, Knights of Columbus, Dive-In Yankton Aquatic Center, and more. I have to breathe now. Jerry has also served Birthright, Inc., Yankton Regional Council on Aging, Big Friend, Little Friend, Lewis &amp; Clark Behavioral Health Center, Community Support Program, Yankton Drug Awareness, Big Red Bookshelf, Parents as Teachers, The Banquet, Yankton Area Literacy Council, Catholic Daughters, Sacred Heart Hospital, Chamber, Community Events, and School Carnivals, and more. They have also served and shared their fondness of entertaining by clowning around as Blossom and Bum Bum Bummer, and whereas they raised a wonderful family with two outstanding sons, Brian and Chris, welcomed two special daughter-in-laws, Terry and Annie, and adore their six precious grandchildren, Luke, Ben, Alex, Sarah, Julia, and Mary. And whereas the Yankton Citizen of the Year Award not only recognizes the hard work and dedication of this city's citizens, but also lauds of spirit that Yankton desires to hold up as an example to call its own, which Mike and Jerry exemplify, it is fitting and proper to recognize the many commendable accomplishments of this noteworthy couple. And now therefore I, Mayor Jake Hoffner, do proclaim, February 25th is Mike and Jerry Healy Day. In this great city of Yankton, I join with the Healy family, their loyal colleagues, and their many friends, their fellow volunteers, all who have benefited from their hard work and selfless volunteerism, and the entire Yankton community to thank them for their service and to honor Mike and Jerry Healy as Yankton's 2017 Citizens of the Year. I'll give you a copy of that. I'll keep the main one here till 25th, and if you want a copy, we have. Wow, congratulations, Mike and Jerry. Hey, you want to?
You might want to say something, Mayor.
You want to? Do we dare give you the microphone, Mike?
Go ahead, if you want to say something.
Congratulations.
Well, we're very honored to, um, have been selected as the 2017 Citizens of the Year. It certainly is humbling to us, even though we've been volunteering for many, many, many years, we go way, way back, um, so it isn't something that just happened. But we are very honored to receive this recognition, and we thank everyone very much.
We, um, we just came from the archery center, and we were shooting at 7:30, so we won't make this too long. But anyway, um, as Jerry said, we're really are humbled and honored to be recipients of the 2017 Citizens of the Year. I think too, that, to, uh, thanks to the city of Yankton for this proclamation, it's most appreciated, and we, um, we hope that we can live up to what, uh, what this represents, and there are just so many activities that so many people are volunteering for in the community that, um, could be receiving this in lieu of us, so we, we accept it for, for everyone that volunteers within the community, and many of you right here in this room, so thank you, we really appreciate it.
Okay, um, City Manager, report, please.
Thank you. Um, Mike was one of the first people that I met in Yankton filling sandbags, remember that 2011 flood before I was here, was down filling sandbags, and he just sold me on Yankton, even more so than I already was, so, um, congratulations to both of you. Honorable Mayor, members of the commission, just a couple things this evening, as you have a busy agenda tonight, Ross and Al and I are working on, um, I guess the bones of a inclement weather policy for our meetings, uh, so that will come forward to you in some type of form of an ordinance for you to consider in the future. Um, as you remember, our last meeting that we held, uh, we all made it, but there was quite a bit of inclement weather, and, uh, we want to have the opportunity, uh, if you so choose to, to be able to cancel meetings in the case of a natural disaster or inclement weather, so Ross is working on some research for that. Um, also, um, Al is working on, uh, some information for you in case you want to take a look at the late fees for utilities, we haven't changed those fees in quite some time, and so if that's something that you want to take a look at, Al's going to do a little bit of research, that's coming forward in the next couple of minutes, uh, meetings, excuse me. I have a sales tax report, which some of you have already heard, but I wanted to let the public and media know, we had a very strong December, uh, December's month end, uh, month end came in at 5.95% above, so that's awesome, and that, uh, leaves us with a year-end of 2.53% ahead, so, uh, very good, stronger a lot than a lot of our, the other first-class municipalities, so, uh, great job, and I think going into 2018, uh, we have positive, uh, indicators that, uh, we'll have another good year, so I hope we end up at least that strong, if not stronger, so. I don't have any other items to bring forward, if you have questions of me, I'm happy to answer them, otherwise I'll let you get to your business.
Any questions for Manager Nelson? All right, let's move on to the next order of business. This is a time and place for a public appearance, if anybody has any item that would like to come forward, you're sure welcome to, that's not on the agenda? Okay. We're going to move on to the consent items, there's not very many, so we'll do them individually. Number one is established a public hearing for the sale of alcoholic beverage on February 26th, it's a date for the public hearing. Is there a motion?
I move consent, number one.
Second.
Been moved and seconded? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Number two is established a public hearing, another one for February 26th, for the same thing, for one-day license, March 3rd, for the center.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Anybody from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number three under consent items is a transient merchant license and special events dance license for memorandum of 18-20 Riverboat Days.
So moved.
It's been moved and seconded? Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carried. Number four is a dance license, a dance license consideration, a memorandum of 18-25, type B dance license for cheers.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Sarda?
Aye.
Ferdy?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Knopf?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner?
Aye, motion carried. Moving on to old business, number one, this is the time and place for a public hearing of consideration, a memorandum of 18-15.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Uh, roll call, please.
Ferdy?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Knopf?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner?
Aye, motion carried. Number two, this is the time and place for a public hearing of memorandum of 18-16 for a special dance retail liquor license.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion?
Question. What, what do we charge for a one-day license?
Testing me there, I believe we're at $15 on the one day.
Okay, thank you.
Any other discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Gross?
Aye.
Knopf?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Ferdy?
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner?
Aye, motion carried. Moving on to number three, under old business, this is again is a public hearing for consideration of memorandum of 18-17 for Riverboat Days.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Knopf?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Ferdy?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner?
Abstained, motion carried. Number four, public hearing again for the memorandum of 18-18 for Riverboat Days.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Ferdy?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Knopf?
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner?
Abstained, motion carried. Number five under old business is a, another public hearing for the sale of alcoholic beverages, memorandum of 18-19.
So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded, any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Minor?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Ferdy?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Knopf?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner?
Aye, motion carried. Moving on to new business, number one, under new business is refund of 2009 participation revenue bonds for the North Fire Station memorandum of 18-24 and resolution 18-06. Somebody want to explain that first? Yeah. Nobody wants to explain it, it's a good thing, but somebody has to tell us why.
I think Al should explain it.
Okay, all right, Al, you take it, okay, go ahead.
Um, we're anxiously awaiting the arrival of our bond council on this, Toby Morris, um, what this is basically is when, back in 2009, when we financed the new fire station, we did it with a bond issuance that was called certificates of participation, um, the rates at that time were slightly higher than today's rates, they were, you know, as you see in the memo, they averaged between four and five, 4.4 and 5% for an average of 4.562. Uh, currently, the bond market is down, um, and Toby, uh, had looked through this in the last few months and suggested that we, uh, reissue, so what you're basically doing is, is borrowing the amount of money to pay off the old bonds early, and, and now we'll have a new debt service, um, and again, according to the estimates, we'll save approximately $185,000 over the, uh, existing life of what's left of the original bonds. So, again, you know, we're paying a fee to Mr. Morris for this service, but we're saving above and beyond that approximately $185,000. Um, the reason we say approximately is this is slightly different than, like our SRF loans where they're locked in, we know the amount, uh, anytime you go out on the private market, it's the day you issue them, so we're, we're basing that on estimates of where the market is right now, um, and, oh, by the way, the market is extremely volatile right now, so this could change slightly, but, uh, if, if the savings aren't there, of course, we wouldn't reissue, we'd just continue paying off the old bonds. Any questions?
Who, who holds the existing bonds?
Uh, they're in the private market, so it's...
Widely held.
Yep. Um, I believe that, uh, if I remember right, on the issuance on these back in 2009, a number of these are held by a local financial institution, but not all of them, so.
If the commission has more questions, Mr. Morris is on his way, you could table, he hit some bad weather between here and Rapid City, so he's on his way, but, no, he thought maybe 7:30, so.
Any more discussion, or is there a motion?
I move that we approve the memorandum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, any more discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Ferdy?
Aye.
Gross?
Aye.
Knopf?
Aye.
Mybaum?
Aye.
Minor?
Aye.
Sarda?
Aye.
Mayor Hoffner?
Aye, motion carried. Number two, Walnut Street Presentation, memorandum of 18-27. Anybody want to have an overview first before we attempt to take action?
Sure, we can, we can visit a little bit here, and Stockwell has a presentation for everyone as well. As many of you know, the Walnut Street project has been part of our capital improvement plan for quite some time. Downtown improvements is something that the city commission has been engaged in for a number of years, and we began to, uh, continue on that journey, I guess, last year, when the commission decided to work on the bumpouts, uh, on Second Street. And so that project was completed last year, and during that time, we began to plan for Walnut Street, and what we planned for was for a, a typical reconstruction and some utility work, along with what we would call, uh, typical amenities in the downtown area, uh, things like flower baskets and the historic light poles and things of that nature. Uh, when we, uh, brought the project forward, uh, we wanted you all to look at the curb alignment, which you did, and there's a, uh, narrowing of the street to, uh, allow for more pedestrian access and pedestrian uses, as well as to make the street a little more friendly for pedestrians as we funnel them to the park and from the park to the downtown, and at that point, the commission directed, uh, the city staff to work closely with the Design South Dakota process and Onward Yankton's, uh, emphasis on downtown to really make a, uh, a lot of detail or to incorporate them into the design of, of the plan, the plan. So, we did that, and the timing was really great for that, um, our staff has worked closely through that process, and we had the advantage also with Onward Yankton and Design South Dakota to have some university students from SDSU play a part and a role in, um, inventing, I guess, what they would like to see along the corridor. Uh, because of that, the project changed significantly, um, we soon realized that, uh, while we, um, do, do a little bit of design and landscaping work in-house, that, uh, this was a little bit beyond what we were capable for, of, and so we asked, uh, you all if we could employ Stockwell Engineering, who has a professional landscape architect on staff, who we'll hear from tonight, to help us make sure we can incorporate all those, uh, ideas, and not just incorporate them, but incorporate them in a way that makes sense, in a way that creates place, in a way that sets a mood and theme for that area, so that when people enjoy that area, they really feel, have a sense of arrival and that they're somewhere special. Um, we think we can do that, but we all, um, know that, that, uh, there's professionals out there that have a real, uh, science to that art, so to speak, so, uh, we engaged with Stockwell, and they've been working with us, and we really incorporated a lot of the ideas that came forward, not just from those that were directly involved in Design South Dakota, but also from ideas that people have brought to us over the last couple of years in talking about downtown design. Uh, because the project's completely different, the cost is also completely different, and we want to make sure you all have a full understanding of what the project entails and what it will look like, um, and these are concepts, so please don't hold us to the exact, you know, type of flower or tree or what have you, but, um, that these are concepts of what the feel and theme will look like, but also get you all to, uh, decide whether or not you want to give us the go-ahead, uh, to move forward with this project, because it does come at a significantly higher cost than the initial standard, uh, landscape and, uh, street redesign, so. Adam is here, and he, he can talk a little bit about the street, David Locke is here from Stockwell Engineers, he'll talk about the plan, and before they do that, I will say, um, this has been a really interesting project to work on, because we always say, "Oh, we want community involvement, and we want citizens engaged," and that's true, um, but it doesn't always happen, not too many people, unless it's actually their street, get a lot really excited about street construction, not too many people, um, unless they have, um, you know, a vested interest in the project, want to talk about the bonds, for example, or something like this, but this was a project where we had a lot of people directly involved in design and a lot of input in design, so that's been fun and exciting, Meridian District folks have been great to help us through that process as well. Also, um, we grew up a little bit, I think, on this project as a staff, because we're really good as bureaucrats of, you know, this is a street project, so engineering works on it, and this is a parks project, so parks works on it, but we had all hands on deck here and had a lot of involvement, so that's been really good too, and I think good for our organization, so that's just kind of a sidebar. I'll be quiet, I'm excited about this, as you can tell, but I'll be quiet and I'll let, um, Adam and, and David talk to you a little bit about the plan, and then we'll answer questions.
All right, uh, Amy gave a great introduction there, uh, my name is David Locke, I'm landscape architect with Stockwell Engineers here in town, and, uh, what we're going to do is just, we're just going to walk down Walnut Street tonight with you guys for this presentation, uh, to look at the, the vision for Walnut Street and, and Second Street, and look at it not only as a, a road reconstruction project, but creating a great public space for not only the residents of Yankton, but those that come and visit, uh, and come here on a regular basis. And so, the area that we're going to be looking at as, uh, a part of this presentation, this project, uh, is outlined in orange up there, uh, like I said, not only includes Walnut Street, uh, which has the great view shed of Meridian Plaza and the Meridian Bridge, uh, coming from the north to the south, uh, but also Second Street, uh, and bringing that, some elements of the design of Walnut Street and the Meridian Plaza, and bringing those down Second Street, uh, and connecting those to, to the businesses that are a little bit further east of Walnut Street, uh, and, and south and north on Second Street as well, so it really ties and unifies that area, uh, all together. So this is an overall plan, uh, of Walnut Street, and it's, it's hard to see what's going on, uh, on this slide, but this is, is kind of the overall vision of it, uh, and what we're going to do is just kind of walk our way through Walnut Street from Fourth Street, the Third, to Second, and then we'll go down Second Street, uh, and just go through all the different elements, uh, I'm going to go through it fairly quickly, uh, just because it's a lot of, um, you know, once we talk about the elements, it's just repeating those elements, uh, consistently and in a rhythm, uh, down the street, and so, we're going to go over the elements first, uh, and then we're going to really dive into, into each block, and so, as, as a part of looking at the streetscape as a whole, uh, we, we discussed, okay, what, what is it that, uh, brings people to Yankton, and, and what is it that's unique about Yankton? And, and something that has always been, been striking about downtown Yankton, and, and especially City Hall, is, is what we're calling the Yankton Lantern, uh, and, and that great light fixture, uh, that is at the entrance to City Hall, and, and bringing that from City Hall and down into the community, down downtown, along Walnut Street. So we have a, a few locations where we're looking to incorporate, uh, the Yankton Lantern, one at each intersection, uh, so at Fourth Street, Third Street, and Second Street, there would be one of these, uh, Yankton light fixtures at each of those intersections. Uh, we also wanted to kind of tie in the industrial, uh, the stone and steel, uh, type theme that is evident in both downtown Yankton, uh, but also in the Meridian Bridge, utilizing those, uh, materials, uh, of the Meridian Bridge, uh, and the Meridian Plaza, and bringing those into downtown, down Walnut Street, uh, and, and to the, into the rest of the area. And so, the planter in the upper right-hand corner there, uh, shows the, the different materials that will be utilized, uh, throughout the planters, uh, as they move down Walnut Street, uh, which would have, uh, Corten steel edging, uh, which would be, we'll have a picture of what that looks like here in a moment, but it's similar, uh, to, to the Corten steel, uh, kind of raised planters that are at Meridian Plaza, although the ones at Meridian Plaza are 18 inches tall, these would be four to six inches tall, so they'd be more curb height related, uh, and then each of those planters would be anchored on either side with a limestone, uh, bench, uh, seat, and that seat would have, uh, a chamfer on the side that is to the sidewalk, which would have a Y, uh, embossed on it and painted black, making that unique, uh, uh, to Yankton, and with the stone being unique to Yankton, to the Meridian Plaza, and, and incorporating that chamfer and that Y onto the different stone pieces that would be throughout downtown. Although the ones at Meridian Plaza are 18 inches tall, these would be four to six inches tall, so they'd be more curb height related. And then each of those planters would be anchored on either side with a limestone bench seat. And that seat would have a chamfer on the side that is to the sidewalk, which would have a Y embossed on it and painted black, making that unique to Yankton. And with the stone being unique to Yankton, to the Meridian Plaza, and incorporating that chamfer and that Y onto the different stone pieces that would be throughout downtown. Around the planter then would be quartzite pavers, which would be in a soldier course pattern that would go around each of the planters. Those are also in direct correlation with the Meridian Plaza. And then through the planters, because nobody likes to walk all the way around the planter, whether it's ten below or it's nice outside, everyone likes to go the path of least resistance. And instead of there being cow paths through the planter, that can be difficult to maintain or can be unsightly as you're driving down, we've got these quartzite steppers that would be centered up between parking stalls. So that as you get out of your vehicle, instead of having to walk around the planter, you'll be able to walk right across, across these quartzite steppers. So trying to think of maintenance and what it's going to take to maintain a street of this character moving forward. And so those are the unifying elements that you're going to see as a part of this design as we move forward here. Also, from a lighting standpoint, what's not shown, I guess, in this planter, I don't know if this will pull up there, but in the, in the middle of that planter would be a tree. And so each of those planters are sized adequately to provide the proper tree soil volume for each tree. And there will be uplights for each tree that would shine up into the canopy to give you that ambiance, that unique feeling as you're walking down Walnut Street and centered onto the Meridian Bridge. Some other elements, I've kind of talked about some of these already. But some of the other elements that'll be incorporated is a fire feature that will be located in the northeast corner of Second and Walnut. That's just an image of what that potentially could look like, but what we're looking at designing is something very similar with limestone blocks around the edges, large chunks of black lava rock that would be in the middle there, that would look, give you that great contrast between the white limestone and the black lava rock. So that even when the fire is not in use, it still, it still looks nice, more of a, more as a sculptural element. You guys are familiar in the lower left-hand corner with a limestone block. That's getting incorporated throughout the streetscape. However, we'll also have that chamfer Y that we discussed. And then some additional site furnishings, some bike racks, trash receptacles, metal benches, above-ground concrete planters that could be utilized for annuals or for other types of landscaping to accent areas where we want to have a little more hardscape and don't have the space to do a full planter. That's where those above-ground concrete planters come into play. The image of the Corten metal edging, which is shown from Meridian Plaza, some large pieces of quartzite, those are all, the image are tightly spaced together, but same type of a concept, and then colored concrete. And so those are kind of the unifying elements that are already a part of downtown and a part of Meridian Plaza and bringing those down Walnut Street. So from Fourth Street to Third Street, so we're going to start on the, on the north end of the project and walk our way to the south toward the bridge. And right away at that intersection, like we discussed, will be a Yankton Lantern at the southwest corner of that intersection in front of the old post office. So that Yankton light fixture will be at that location. And then as we go down the street, you'll have this rhythm, this repetition of these planters, which will incorporate the Corten Steel metal edging, the limestone blocks, the quartzite pavers around each one with, with colored concrete in between them. So it'll be your, your regular concrete, which will really kind of form the pedestrian way up against the businesses. That'll vary, you know, anywhere from, from nine to 10 feet wide, giving you a nice wide sidewalk area. And then the furnishing zone, which is really the colored concrete area, is anywhere from seven to eight feet wide. And that's, that furnishing zone is where we would have the planters, where you'd have your trash receptacles. It's where the lights occur. And then also some additional hardscape areas where we may have driveways or handicap accessible parking ramps. That way to prevent, to make this space accessible to all users, not just vehicles, but also people or elderly with disabilities, bicyclists, pedestrians, thinking about, okay, how, how do people utilize this space on a regular basis? Both business owners and people going there and visiting as well. So as you move to the south, the planters will also incorporate some bike racks in some of those locations till you get to the bump outs at Third Street. Those bump outs you guys are familiar with. But we're also going to be incorporating some landscaping into each of those areas. And then also incorporating some public art. There's already some great public art pieces at that location. But we would be incorporating them into landscape areas to make them more fit and be a part of the streetscape and something that is a little bit easier to clear snow around as well. So that'll be at Third Street. And then as a part of, whoops, I went backwards. Oh, now I'm all screwed up. How do I go backwards? Oh. There we go. Okay. So, and then as we move from Third Street to Second Street, we've, we've started to look at, okay, how can we incorporate some more public space, not just within the roadway, but also in the sidewalk area? And so at the southeast corner of Third and Walnut would be some additional pedestrian space. That would be flexible space that could be utilized for a number of different activities, whether it's tables and chairs, or you'll see a graphic here in a moment of people, some people playing some cornhole. It's just a flexible space that can be utilized for visitors and citizens here in Yankton. As you continue to move south, again, the repetition of different site furnishings, of different planters. You have bike racks, you have your concrete planters, landscaping. And then as we get to closer to Second Street is where those pedestrian spaces get a little bit larger and we start the transition into Meridian Plaza. And so Second Street as an intersection would be a raised intersection to bring the vehicles up to that pedestrian space. It makes vehicles slow down in that area and it makes that space feel more a part of the pedestrian environment as opposed to vehicles. The pedestrian spaces as zones on the side, for the sidewalk on the northeast corner and the northwest corner start to widen out to a larger bump out. On the northwest corner, it widens out and the sidewalk moves to the east to be more in alignment with Meridian Plaza and that pedestrian crossing. The, the dark blue building that is at that corner, that intersection will be our new Yankton office location. So that is a building that we are currently in the process of designing and beginning construction on that hopefully this year. So that'll be home of our, of our new office in that location. And then on the northeast corner is, is a fire feature. And that's where that would be located. And that would have landscaping, limes, a number of different limestone blocks around that area, metal benches to really make that space feel a part of the extension of Meridian Plaza and really a public space that could be utilized both in the evening and the daytime. So as you go from Second Street and start to move east, down Second Street from Walnut Street, the parking lots that are city-owned along Doug, along Douglas and also on Capitol that connect all of those streets together, we would incorporate some of those elements that we talked about with Walnut. There would be some limestone benches that would be incorporated along the sidewalk and the street zone as a part of the design, as well as quartzite steppers through the landscaping to allow people to park and have access directly to the streetscape area. New landscaping down Douglas Avenue. And then that the, the new bump outs that were just created this year at Douglas and at Capitol Street, especially Capitol Street with that nice, large, beautiful tree that's right there, incorporating some landscaping and some additional site furnishings, benches, the limestone benches, bike racks, trash receptacles at those locations as well. So here's a perspective view of what the Walnut Street and Second Street intersection potentially look like. Again, we wanted to, to draw attention to this space as it's not just a space for vehicles, but also for bicyclists, pedestrians. The, there's really a public space for everybody at this location, whether it's the fire pit, it's the Yankton light feature. We really wanted this, this space to feel like an extension of Meridian Plaza and really a great forecourt to that bridge. Here's a perspective view of that extended pedestrian space at Walnut Street and Third Street. Again, this could be, this would be a multifunctional space. This image here, we've got people playing, playing cornhole in this area. Could also be tables and chairs as well to provide people a little bit of a respite for lunch or to take a break and eat at this location here. So this really provides a multifunctional, useful space for pedestrians that's surrounded by landscaping. And then in the evening, oh, I double clicked again. Sorry. Could we go back? And then in the evening would be set off with the, the Yankton Lantern at this intersection, which would have, which would glow. And then also the, the tree uplights in this area, providing that, that ambiance, that, that unique lighting experience in a downtown-type setting with the historic lights that'll be incorporated as a part of this design as well. So to make this a safe and pedestrian environment that really draws people even in the evening times to Walnut Street. From a cost standpoint, as Amy indicated, we wanted to break out some of these items into cost improvements that are really kind of grouped together. We have a far more detailed cost estimate, but we wanted to kind of start to group things together just to give everyone an idea as to what some of these things cost. So from a landscaping standpoint, we broke it out into the parking lots and the Second Street improvements and then just strictly the Walnut Street improvements. And the, the landscaping includes not only the plants and the trees and, and the mulch and the fabric that, that goes underneath the mulch, but also includes the topsoil. And topsoil is a big part of, of understanding what it takes to, to create a great growing environment for the trees and for the landscaping. Because everyone's familiar with, you know, you plant a tree in a downtown and in 15, 20 years, you've got heaved sidewalks in different locations. Well, that's because trees and plants are opportunistic and they'll go to the path of least resistance. And so those joints in the sidewalk become locations where they can go if they don't have the adequate soil volume. And so what we've done with all these landscape areas is size them with the adequate soil volume that a tree would need in a downtown-type setting to offset the fact, to offset those potential for heaving sidewalks in the future, once those trees get big and beautiful, which we hope they all do. The limestone blocks are those, are those seat wall blocks that we, that we showed earlier. And then the site furnishings would be bike racks and trash receptacles, metal benches and those types of things. From the Walnut Street side, storm sewer, we like to put, to incorporate drain tile underneath the planters because, again, because that's topsoil in that area, water works its way through the path of least resistance. And so any water that potentially gets under the street and into the pavement section drains itself inherently to the planter areas. And, and believe it or not, even areas that are not irrigated, those trees can suffer because those roots stay wet and saturated as a part of either groundwater or rainwater that gets in and, and works its way into those planter areas. And so having a drain tile that goes through the bottom of those allows the water to clean itself and filter through the soil medium, be taken up by the plants. But anything in excess goes into the storm sewer system. And we're also going to be taking water into those planters from the sidewalk as well. So that'll help from a drainage standpoint in the area. Surfacing will be anything from the Corten Steel metal edging, the quartzite pavers, that type of thing. Again, the landscaping, the Yankton lanterns would be those light fixtures with the limestone bases to them, the limestone blocks, the fire features, the site furnishings. Site furnishings again would be the bike racks, the trash receptacles, the metal benches, those types of things. And then the lighting and electrical would be for the tree uplights and then incorporating outlets into each of the planters so that in, during, whether it's Christmas or different areas, different types of, times of year, decorative lights could be put up on the trees or other type features in this area. With that.
All right, thank you.
Has any questions?
Adam, you have to add anything or do you want to?
I got a question for our landscape. The trees, I haven't heard a lot of comments or feedback, but one of the trees that will not be so as large, you know, are they sized down a bit so they're not so imposing against the buildings?
They'll, it'll be, they, they won't be quite as large as what is there today. I mean, it'll take, it takes a long time for a tree to get to that size. But the, we would look at a variety of different trees, whether that's maples or honey locusts. I mean, honey locusts, you can get trees that, that don't get quite as big as, as the green ash that are currently in downtown right now. So yes, we'll look at a number of different variety of trees because it's one of the other reasons why we need to look at replacing a lot of those trees is just because they are green ash and the emerald ashmore. And we want to create a diverse plant palette for, for downtown to, to offset any issues in terms of pests that may happen in the future. And so we'll look at a variety of different trees. Most of them will be smaller in nature as opposed to what's currently planted.
And then honey locusts, are they the ones with the tiny leaves?
Correct.
All right. And I can tell you speak from experience that when there's no grass for those to go into, they end up in, inside buildings because they get picked up by feet. So I mean, that, that was, that's kind of the only complaint I get are trees downtown tend to be quite messy. And then the breakup of the concrete, which you talked about.
Right. Yep.
You know, how much benefit do you get out of a tree downtown versus just having more landscaping? And I don't know how many, I guess I don't look at that when I drive downtown, but in a lot of downtowns, but I would think that some are even just eliminating trees altogether. So just my two cents worth as far as when you're working on the design process.
Yeah, no, I get that.
Any more questions?
Yeah, I'll throw out this blue spot in there. I thought that was a parking lot there. So I guess I didn't know you guys were putting a building up right on the corner there.
Yes.
I don't know how much that'll change that landscape, but what's your building ideas there?
In terms of the materials for the building?
Right, because I mean, we're doing a lot of work all over where, where your building's going to be sitting.
Right.
How does that fit in with this?
So the building would be, would be brick and would be quartzite. So it'd be, it would tie with the, the elements that we're utilizing in terms of the quartzite pavers. It's, it's a simpler building design with a lot of windows, which is more of kind of an industrial-type look, which fits with the materials that we're utilizing on Walnut Street and the Meridian Plaza and tying with what's already in downtown. So the, the Corten Steel edging and the quartzite. And then the prairie theme of the, the ornamental grasses and the different perennials that would be downtown would, would certainly be unifying within anything that we would do.
So I would echo Commissioner Sarda's questioning. The first question I have for staff is, did anybody know that Stockwells was going to be relocating into this area? I assumed it was parking lot.
Yes, we knew. So Stockwell purchased the parking lot, I believe, from one of the banks in town that owned the parking lot space. And while we were in design of this project, we were, you know, we knew that there was soil borings being done and that was for sale. We did not know that it was being for, potentially sold to Stockwell. Upon them making the sale, Stockwell informed us of that, that they were going to purchase the parking lot and potentially build a building and asked us at that time to keep it confidential until they were able to finalize their sale. They did make that public maybe a couple of weeks ago, two or three weeks ago, to the Preservation Commission, because it's in the historic district. So the Preservation Commission was aware of that and they presented their building. So, yeah, so we knew, but we were already in design when we knew and this project was going to be designed, whether or not Stockwell was building a building there or not. So if that makes the commission feel a little better about that.
Yeah, and, and I don't mean to derail the conversation because the presentation was fantastic. So just to understand the optics of the situation here, right? We're, we're employing.
We're employing you and empowering you to do a lot of great work here for us. And it sounds beautiful, going to be headquarters there, but sorry, it was news to me.
Yes. Are there any other questions?
I can move, I can move.
Let me forget who you are.
Hello, Paul Lowery. I will keep it short. So in regards to that building, I would give a positive related to that. I saw that, I was like, hmm, cool. That solves a lot of issues, most importantly shade. So that's kind of a cool thing. I just want to throw that out. Question on your presentation there, you kind of lost me on the drainage and all that. Is there irrigation in those beds? There's no irrigation at all, so they'll be like all the watering downtown with all the planters then?
They'll, they'll need, they'll need more regular watering in the first couple of years to get them established, but after that, we're going to.
Excuse me, do you want to grab a mic so that people?
The first couple of years, they'll require more intensive watering just to get them established, but we'll be specifying plants that are drought tolerant. So whether that's ornamental, different types of ornamental grasses or day lilies are actually very resilient as well, or other types of lower shrubs, nothing that's going to get too high. We're going to pick plants that'll be drought tolerant, that will be able to withstand kind of the harsh urban environment, but also flourish in regards to the rain patterns of this, of the upper plains.
Another thing I'll add, there's a great example of a tree in regards to trees. I believe it was a great example because Gurney's did it back in the day as an example of what to do on a side of a building. And I've watched it over the years, been very close to seeing what's going on with it. Not sure what it is. I was thinking it was an ornamental pear thing, not that it doesn't have any fruit or anything on it. It's a very cool tree. It has continued to just stay narrow and gone up and up. And I think originally it was at about second floor, now it's up to almost roof level. And so it's over on Capitol and Second Street. And if you can figure that type of tree is, it's just been a great tree, easy to maintain. Leaves aren't like what you're talking about and it stays nice and tight and everything. Anyway.
Yep, we all appreciate that.
So quick question to maybe Amy. So there'll be bump outs and I know that we did change our sidewalk ordinance for licenses to go out there, so we will, they will be able to go into this area?
Yes, so the folks that have the sidewalk cafe permits, they'll be able to utilize the space. We may have to make some adjustments to that ordinance so that they're able to, they'll have more space to use. So we'll still want to have the path for pedestrians, but folks that have those will still be able to get those licenses and maybe potentially have some more room to do some of those things.
Any other discussion? If not, do you want to make a motion?
Can I move the memorandum?
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Anybody from the public? Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Number three, under new business, Walnut Street Lighting. Memorandum eighteen dash two eight. Move memorandum. It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
My only, my only concern on this thing is I'm not used to seeing such a high percentage of design work versus money to implement. We got a $25,000 fee for design work and about $75,000 worth of, to implement. I'm assuming most of that is in the design of the Yankton Light. Would that be correct? Do you have a, you have a breakdown on what that is?
The, the cost for the Yankton Light was in, is in the PowerPoint breakdown as a line item there. So that includes everything for that Yankton Light, the footing, getting the electrical to it, the limestone block that's on it, and then the light fixture on top of it. And so all of that is included along with the, the design of the tree uplights, the outlets as a part of incorporating that into that streetscape. So that's all a part of that just, and it's not necessarily just, you know, our fees, it's also working with a sub consultant electrical engineer to make sure that that's all designed and implemented correctly.
And that, so the one, the 150 for the lights that we passed, that's just for the construction and putting it up? That's completely separate from what we're talking about now?
Correct, correct. The Yankton Lights were listed out as, yeah, approximately 150 and that was about another 90 for, for the tree uplights and the outlets.
Any more questions? From the public?
So Paul Lowery again. So I have a question, well, it's not really a question, I just have a, something I want to bring up related to this. For several years, I've been seeing that this project is going to be coming up and be a big dollar amount, which is well over 2 million or whatever, somewhere in there. Anyway, one thing that I brought up in the past was related to somehow having some light feature thing integrated into this that goes beyond just the Walnut Third, Third and Fourth Street, you know, the Walnut Street corridor, something that expands into the rest of downtown. The reason why I had brought that up before is there's an opportunity here where really kind of compounded into what we're doing right now, there could be some kind of a thing done throughout the rest of Third Street, for that matter, that has a significant wow appeal. I know it's very confusing to go off rail on this stuff, but I've talked about this several times over and I brought it up in the past as well when they were coming here to get the bid on, on doing the design project on this. And one of the things was talking about having something extend further into the rest of downtown, mainly Third Street. And probably to describe that best is something to the effect of like what was on buildings before, that was very cool, it was awesome. Technology has come a long way where LED lighting and all kinds of things are much more efficient on being able to do it and not be damage prone and all that type of thing. But the wow factor of it was pretty incredible. The thing that made that go away at the time was that it wasn't connected to the meters. It was like extension cords rather than conduit. So there was going to be some additional costs going on to try to upgrade what was there. I would just like to put it back on the table again is just be aware that there's 2 point some million dollars being spent. It really isn't that much to put stuff on the buildings that were there before and the technology is much more efficient now. And we already have in downtown separate meters and everything that are on the backs of all those buildings for when that project was done originally as a, as a project for downtown. So I don't know, you can read the history on it and look back and just see what it is, but that was just something.
Hey, thanks, Paul. There is actually a group right now working on additional lighting for downtown. So very much appreciate your thoughts. I don't know, Todd, do you want to add a little?
Yes, what Jake was speaking to, there is a committee through this process, talking with Stockwell, talking with Schram Architects downtown, knowing that there's some desire for lighting downtown, whether it's in the form that used to be or doing some different things. We've got the uplighting, that's where the trees came from, so that we can do as a part of this project because it's out in the, in the right of way. So what you're talking about is more on, on the buildings. That's where this committee has been formed, came out of the Design South Dakota, talking about uplighting on buildings, downlighting on buildings, whether you'd highlight the roof lines on buildings, what you can do with LED lights from across the street to shine across and those type of things, all while can also being considered of the people that are living downtown now up in the buildings. We've heard some concerns about street lights shining in windows and things like that. Dave Mingo's on that committee with us and, and so yes, those conversations are ongoing as we speak, so.
Excellent. My main point was it's pretty easy to bury it in the cost of this project, but it'll come up later and it'll be a half million dollars and it could have been 100,000.
Wouldn't that be, the city's putting lights on private businesses? I mean, wouldn't the private sector be working with this group?
Yeah, I don't know.
All the downtown owners should be on this group and funding those lights also versus the city since it's their property.
Yeah, I, I don't know. I'm just putting the idea out there.
We have a new member in our group. Thank you, Paul, for volunteering. All right, moving on, or we have a motion and anybody, I should ask one more time, any more discussion on the lighting on number three under new business? If not, roll call, please.
Aye. Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carried. Number four, under new business, is the bid award for Eighth Street Memorandum eighteen dash two six.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion?
How long's this been in the works again?
Longer than I can count.
At least five years. I think it's been in the capital improvement budget, Adam, seven or eight years at least?
It's been around quite a while.
Any more discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Number five, under new business, is the bid award for Chan Gurney Airport Hay Lease Memorandum eighteen dash two three.
So moved.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Number six, under new business, is Golf Cart Entertainment System Memorandum eighteen dash 21. Todd, you want to tell us a little bit about this? The title could be misleading.
You bet. So with our golf court cart lease that we had approved earlier this year, part of that lease, one of the alternatives was to have a dual USB port on all 40 carts. And that was going to cost us approximately $976.80 a year for that dual USB. The idea being that when people are out on the course, then they can plug their cellphones in because people are using it to stream things or listen to music or whatever the case may be. Right after the approval process came from the city commission, the cart company that had the lowest bid got back from the PGA show in Florida and said, well, there's something bigger and better out there. Is this something you'd be interested in viewing and taking to your commission and talking to them about? And after we had researched it, we decided it's worth bringing here. In the past, going back in the 10 years that I've been here, Scott Larson, even in the time before I was here, there's always been talk about trying to get GPS on the carts. And GPS would be that you know the distance from where your cart is roughly to where the pin is on the green. So there's been that discussion. Again, technology has changed quite a bit. People can do some of that on their phone, on their watches and all of that stuff. But with this new entertainment system for the carts, it still has the screen, so you have a decent sized iPad sized screen on your cart up above. They've gone away from just GPS. Verizon Wireless is involved in the deal and then Greg Norman, who his nickname is The Shark, so that's where you get The Shark Experience name. So the PGA and Visage is the program that it used to be, is now tied in with Verizon and this, this Shark Experience. So on this screen, you have the GPS, which you've always had, but they've now with Verizon tying in on it, you can stream live PGA golf events on the golf course on weekends, Thursday, Friday, Saturday, Sunday, while you're golfing. They're working on an NFL contract. Obviously, that's a bigger, bigger deal since their PGA's not involved there and they're not sure they can get that done, but they're trying to. So you could maybe in theory watch football games out there on Sunday afternoons or again Thursday nights early in the, in the season when you're golfing. It also has slacker radio, which you can stream against slackers like Pandora. You can choose your artist. It sets up a playlist and you listen to music. The screen has two speakers on it. Not only that, it also has the capability of, from a management standpoint, you, with the GPS, you can start to put, and again, we're not 100% sure if this technology is going to be available right away, but down the line, it's going to be what they call geo fences. So if we continue to have issues with the rental golf carts going too close to tee boxes, too close to greens, we have complaints from people that live on the golf course. With the GPS, you can put up geo fences so the cart shuts down, gives a warning beep and then shuts down before it gets onto the, the areas that have been marked as non-cart areas. They have to reverse, then the cart will go again. So it's called the geo fence. And then you also have the capability to tie in with your pro shop and your food and beverage system so people can order, see menus and order food and beverage while they're out on the course. Again, they, you could use your cell phone and call in, but it's just the, the way of the world and technology. So this Shark Experience, to have that put on the, like I was telling you, the two USB ports was going to cost us 976.80 a year. If the commission's agreeable, we would go away from the USB ports and go with the entertainment package, what's called the Shark Experience and that screen, and that's 1,380 dollars per year. So it would be a $400 difference, about a $400 difference, $400 more just for the units. So that's one cost. The other part of that is, of course, how software works nowadays is it's a, it's a software model where you have to pay to have the system. So there's two different methods. One, you can have the people that come to the course pay for that. The, the system would be on for the first hole and then at the end of the first hole, a message pops up and says you can continue to have this for 7.99 or 8.99 a round or it's going to shut, it shuts itself off. As a staff, we talked about that. It's kind of that airline model where when you get to the facility and then anything other than, and again, depending on the airline you're flying on, even your seats you have to pay for to get whatever seat you want. And so we just felt that if we were going to do it, we wouldn't want to do that model. If you're going to have it on our carts, then we're going to have it on our carts and you're going to have it available to you and that's going to be part of our experience. That fee is then 3.80 per round. So again, with the GPS technology, it can tell when you're traveling on the course, actually playing golf versus just taking a cart out to somebody and coming back in. But anyway, it's $3.80 a round. To recoup that fee, which is why we have a second memo on the agenda tonight, we would look at increasing our golf cart rate per round. So anybody that's walk up golfing using our carts would pay $2 extra. Again, we price it per seat. So if Dave Knopf and I would go golfing and both have to rent a cart, he pays $2 extra, I pay $2 extra, we cover the $3.80 per round that's going to be in that cart. We also have our carts that are used for golf outings, so we can incorporate our fees into the, into the golf outings and recoup it. Where we wouldn't be able to recoup it this year would be on those that have cart leases with us. So if they have an annual cart lease, this is a bonus that they're going to get this first year and not have to pay extra for it really in that sense. The idea though would be that our carts now become more attractive to people and we see less and less private carts and more people using our carts because of this system that we would put on our carts.
Thank you, Todd. Any questions?
Leave it to me to ask the dumb ones. I go to the golf course to golf, I don't go to watch golf. I'm just saying.
But it would keep you off the green.
Yes, this is a lengthy discussion that we had with our staff because again, we have different age groups on our golf staff out at the course. And from the younger generation, what we hear is for $5 a round that they think this would be just awesome, that there'd be a screen on their cart that they can watch stuff and listen to music and it's just the way of the world at this point, I guess.
My biggest concern would be on a nine or an 18 hole course, how much time is this going to add? If you get a game on that you're into or something, you know, how much, you know, a three hour 18 hole, is that going to, is that going to start taking four hours? I mean, could you lose? four hours? I mean, could you lose money in that way? Maybe we should, maybe we should raise prices per hour instead of per per nine holes?
That'll be something that with the GPS, we'll have to track. Uh, our concern, I guess from the other standpoint of it, we were hoping, again, the golf staff was hoping, uh, not me necessarily, but the golf staff was hoping that some of the complaints about slow play would go away, because now they have something to entertain them while they're waiting on the tee box for the slower golfers in front of them. But, yeah, that wasn't something that we've talked about or been brought up yet, if if this would slow down play.
Todd, you may have mentioned this, but this is a wish of some of the golf players out there and the golf.
Yeah, we sent it to the golf advisory board to let them know. Uh, a few of them got back to me and said that they they really liked this idea. Uh, one of the golf, golf board advisory members wondered if if we could keep some carts without it to try to have a, and then that would have the cheaper uh golf cart rental rate. Uh, gets to be awful hard then when you only have five carts without and and 35 with, and then who gets to rent? And the five are gone, and now they gotta pay more, and anyway. So, we are, recommendation would be was, the 40 carts that we have would all get it, but.
Just to speak on that, they do keep track of your time on those carts, 42, so if you go over two hours, it warns you on the screen? It tells you you're over your.
Yeah, so if, that is true, because part of the the GPS package, not only like I talked about the geo fence part of it, but uh they have the tracking capability. Our issue at the course right now is we have our carts that would have this system mingled with private carts, obviously, that you can't monitor. But, yeah, you can set it up that they get warnings on these carts that they're playing too slow and and some of those things.
Right. And then is there any, like, evidence or anything that you would, food increases would happen with cart sales or anything like that to improve revenue?
Yeah, so they they've based this system on their old Visage system, and yes, they've, the courses that do have it have seen some increases. Again, to quote it to our course, I don't have any hard data, because we obviously haven't had it implemented, but yes, they're telling us we should see an increase in golf, pro shop, and best, definitely food and beverage sales because of this, but I can't put a number to it, so.
Yeah, because the ones I've worked with or played golf with, they basically pops up on hole 17 or tee box of 18 if you want to order food, so then when you roll in.
It's already ready and ready to go. Yep, yep.
I I think it's a great idea. I think it gives us a step up uh with the times that not a lot of people, uh, not a lot of people can offer. Um, you know, and like everything else, there's probably going to be some bugs you'll have to work through, but uh I think we're staying ahead of the curve. I think it's a good idea.
Our guy that, uh, our our NB Golf guy that we've been working with is, has said, really in a 90-mile radius, and and again, I can't, I, that would cover Sioux City, I find it hard, maybe the Sioux City wouldn't, but the Sioux Falls courses have have been using this type of, the older system, uh, and Great Life's course in Worthington, Minnesota, has been using this system. Otherwise, uh, you're going to get to Omaha, Kansas City, Minneapolis, bigger towns before you're going to see this type of system on a golf cart.
Okay. Anybody like to make a motion?
Move the memorandum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any more discussion? Any more from the audience? Roll call, please.
Aye.
Aye.
Yes.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Number seven under new business is tied to the last one, 2018 proposed Box Run Golf Course Cart Fees memorandum eighteen dash two two. Move the memorandum.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Any discussion? Anybody from the audience? Roll call, please.
Aye.
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 Aye, motion carried. Under other business, Toby, would you like to say a few words? Or you?
Thanks, Mayor, Members of the Commission. Toby Morris, uh, I believe you've already covered the the resolution, so what I wanted to.
Yes, those were, that was passed, so unless they have more questions for you, that's done.
What I wanted to do, just give you a quick update um on the mall project. I know for the past eight years, we've discussed this, so I can say it's probably within a couple of weeks of reach. What has happened is, um.
Toby, excuse me, when you say mall, you gotta put your hand up so nobody throws anything at you.
I know. When we closed on the TIF last fall with the developers' agreement, there was still some more due diligence that I needed to perform before you actually closed on the financing. I can tell you that the financing is in place for the developers to do the improvements. Uh, you've seen some of the construction go on right now, uh out front. Um, the land transfer has either happened or will happen. What I needed to do is make sure when the hotel was in place, we had to verify that, obviously, that the the flagship was there, that they were approved by their corporate, that their financing was in place before we ever closed on the TIF, because if that doesn't happen, then the TIF doesn't happen. And so, over the past couple of months, that's what we've been working on diligently, a lot of calls going back and forth with developers, with the developer of the hotel itself. I am told that the bid should be on the street here within the next week or so, anticipating that spring construction. Just to reiterate, the city is still in the driver's seat. They must comply with everything that we put in the developers' agreement. Um, I'm sure I'll be on speed dial with Mr. Mingo and and Ms. Nelson to uh verify everything is going in every step of the way, but I truly believe the finish line is in sight. So, um, it's been eight years and it will not be nine. Hope's not a strategy anymore with this. So, I I think we're there, Mayor, and that's what I wanted to give you an update on.
Hey, thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to adjourn an executive session, discuss personnel contracts. It's been moved and seconded. All favorably say aye. Opposed? Same sign? Motion carried.